Of Fayetteville, this is October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. On our agenda, we have Reverend Wyatt Stevens. To say our prayers, so we're going to ask Director Nathan Browning. And then also, we have special guests here tonight for our pledge. We have two fifth graders from Ralph Faskin School. Emmett Wright, and Emmett is the son of Adam and Katie Wright. We also have Natalie Brewer, and she is the daughter of Chris and Brianna Brewer. Both of these, as I say, are fifth graders at Ralph Faskin. So if you girls and boys will come forward, and Director Browning's going to say our prayers, okay?
Let us pray. Lord, gracious God, we thank you for this day, and thank you for this time, Lord, that we have set aside to do the business of this great city, to do the business of you and your will. We thank you for that. Lord God, as we go forward tonight, may you bless this place, may you bless the ones who are in attendance tonight, bless their families. Lord, that the business of the city will be in good faith and will be in your hands. We thank you for everything that you do for us, day in and day out, Lord. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, and what he's done for us. It's in his name we pray, amen.
Another pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic always sustained, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I want to take this time to make an announcement that our next month, monthly Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting will be on Wednesday, November the twelfth, and this is due to Veterans Day being on Tuesday. So next month's meeting, November the twelfth, five o'clock on Wednesday. Now for the adoption of the agenda, I would like to present it to you with an amended agenda, and that is to add item M to the agenda. You were notified previously about this reappointment, and so I just want to make sure that that's on the agenda. If I can get a motion for the amended agenda. Have a motion, second. Motion by Alderman Faulkner, second. Alderman Keenan, any discussion? Debbie, you call the vote, please.
Mr. Alder?
Uh.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Mr. Miss Small?
That motion carries. Okay, also, board, you have been provided the minutes for the September the ninth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. And also, I'll ask first, were there any corrections to the regular meeting minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will stand approved as presented. You were also presented with the special call meeting minutes. That meeting was held on September the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Were there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes will stand approved as presented. We have no one to sign up for public comments tonight, so we will move into our reports. We have with us tonight CEO Britt Dye from the Federal Color Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. The report, we're going to talk a little bit about water. I imagine if you ride anywhere around town, you're going to see we're right in the middle of it. So right now, we're on the College Street, headed east, all the way out to the bypass and sixty-four highway, where we'll be boring a little bit at the bridge, underneath the bridge as well, and open cutting some of that. We're also be putting a twelve-inch line all the way from the square where we stop, which the square looks really good now since the paving has dropped and got done. Turned out to be a good project. Twelve-inch all the way out through there, then we'll be hooking back up on the north main of the square, on the north side of the square going out north main, which will continue on out toward Bryant Avenue up in that area. So we're still got through with third. We're patching holes with gravel, North Bellevue, South Bellevue, Washington Street. We're trying to get everything tested and back teed and all that, so we can start hooking up new services to improve some of those customer services as far as pressure. Some of the ones over on North Bellevue, believe it or not, they had a quarter-inch line for a service line, and that's very, very little, so I mean, no telling what kind of better pressure they're going to be getting. So right now, out of all the lines that we put in, we've installed a thousand seven hundred forty-three feet of twelve-inch. We still got eighteen thousand left to go. On the ten-inch, we've installed four hundred sixty feet, still got a hundred and forty to go. Eight-inch, we've installed a hundred fifty-two feet, over two thousand left to go. Six-inch, we've installed fifty-five hundred feet with forty-seven thousand more feet to go. Two-inch, nineteen thousand more feet to go. And we have installed twenty-two insertion valves. You know, when you get the emails that we got these insertion valves, we can isolate the service lines. We've installed twenty-two of them. We've installed eleven new fire hydrants and seventy-five three-quarter inch services. So we still got a long ways to go, and we're still working on Huntsville Highway on the sewer side. We're about to wrap it up on the main highway, got a couple laterals, working down Liberty Road now to finish that up. I guess you've been seeing that, Alderman, wrap it out through there. So got a lot going on around town. I'd be glad when it's done, but it's a three-year project, so it's a long time. The gas department, we've done some survey on the field services, on the annual gas leak survey. Everything's turned out so good. Engineering, we've had twenty-one pole changes this past month, and we have completed a hundred and forty-five staking sheet workhorses. On the operations side, if you go out, also out Liberty Road, we've been installing a three-phase new line conductor for low growth out in that area. And this line will continue on from the Park City substation going south all the way to the state line. You know, we're getting, that was in our long twenty-year work plan, but we're going on and getting that because of the growth they're expecting to come between Hazel Green and Lincoln County. Tree trimming, we're all over the place. If you could see, a lot of the trees are dying, the ash trees, especially they're falling out of the roadway, causing a lot of problems as far as knocking the lines down. We're trying to take care of them as quick as we can. Telecom, we got fifty-three new services, and right now, we, on this middle mile, we've installed close to another sixty miles of fiber plant. So we will be having contractors coming in on some underground in town. The underground portion, we'll start replacing the old cable plant with fiber. Then when we get the underground part done, then we'll start looking at doing the overhead. So that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions?
I appreciate the one thing down to the ninetieth year anniversary. It went very well, had a good crowd, good turnout, and I appreciate that.
That's very nice. Great, one question. I noticed in some of the subdivisions around, you've got these green boxes around. Will any of this fiber eliminate any of those boxes? Because you've got the tall skinny ones, then you've got the big ones, and...
Yes, ma'am, and some of them are the competitors too. Now, we try to have the smaller boxes, but now with the new box that they've come out that they supply, as far as like even on the electric side for underground services, on the secondary services, it all comes up and it's got all the connectors on the inside, because everything is increased so much in price. We try to get away from pricing everything separate, because it's cheaper to buy it as a whole, so the box might be just a little bit bigger, but we try to go to the minimum as much as we could do. Yes, ma'am.
I had a question about that, and I'm not sure.
They're not the prettiest thing in the world, but you know, you've got to keep everything above the ground so it don't get saturated in water and everything.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll now move to our standing reports, and first, we have the fire department Chief Birdman.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, the fire department responded to a hundred thirty-two incidents. This included a hundred twelve EMS calls, three fires, two hazardous conditions, six good intents, and nine false alarms. That's my report.
Thank you. Police department Chief Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, we had a total of one hundred and one incidents. We made fifty-four arrests, had a total of thirty-nine traffic crashes, and we issued a total of one hundred and thirty traffic citations. There was a total of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two police activity events. And from our criminal investigation division, there's only two investigators that reported, one's on vacation. So those two investigators have a total of three hundred and sixty-eight cases on hand. They opened ten new cases, closed three, and they presented two grand jury presentations, and that's my report.
Thank you. Finance department, Kevin Owens.
Good morning, Mayor and board of the human. For our report, we're going to report that the local sales tax in the month of September was three hundred and thirty-two hundred thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, which represented seven point six nine decrease from this time last year. Our state sales tax was sixty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. That represents a six point fifty-five increase, six point five-five percent increase. And our occupancy tax received was twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and that's a twenty-one point two-two percent decrease from this time last month. And that's the finance report.
Thank you. Parks and Parks Department Director Browning.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to our parade team, committee members, our Christmas parade team this year, the hometown Christmas, which was submitted by Ms. Phyllis Picklin. Monster Mash Bash is scheduled for Saturday, October the twenty-fifth, from five p.m. to eight p.m. at Stone Bridge Park. Senior Fishing Rodeo was a success with over a hundred participants. Bingo for the month of November will be November the third at one o'clock, and that's for anyone fifty-five and older, and that is my report.
Thank you. Uh-oh. No calling out, please. Next, we are going to go to planning and codes, Director Gentry.
I'm from Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Miss Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor.
Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the month of September, the sanitation department picked up two hundred and forty tons of household waste. The street department picked up a hundred and forty-eight tons of brush. The garage completed forty-five work orders along with the maintenance on the Public Works equipment. That's my report.
Thank you. Now for planning and codes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nineteen permits were issued in September. The total project valuation was eight hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The total permit fees was three thousand eleven dollars. This month, during the department report, we've added a list of the mobile food vendors with our regular report on your iPads, and so that has a current list that we wanted to provide. And then October the twentieth is the next date that the fire department will be doing the fire inspections for the mobile food vendors, and those are done at Station Two on Thornton Taylor Parkway. For September, we had forty-five property maintenance violations that were logged, and then we have a second court hearing coming up on October the sixteenth for six to in Kiwanis Avenue. Garrett Jones was able to obtain his property maintenance housing inspector certification, so I wanted to congratulate him. At the September twenty-third planning commission meeting, we held officer elections. Jim Donaldson is our chairman, Frank Hughes is our vice chairman, and Dr. Mike Carey is our secretary. We approved the Palacio minor plat at that meeting, and then two rezoning requests were approved and recommended up to this board, and they're on the agenda tonight to call for a public hearing, and that's my report.
Thank you. Back to City Administrator Kevin Owens for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, you should have received my report in your package, but also know things that we're working on. First, I would like to thank the police department Chief Genie Jennings and Debbie. Today, we were able to work out a major security issue for the municipal building that has been hunting me for, since my arrival, so you will get an email because it's a security issue, but it was a big accomplishment, and I do want to give credit to both of them. In addition, we are still continuing to work on the homeless issues. We have a meeting in two weeks to try to bring a little resolve to that. Jack Williams and I are talking constantly about fleet management and redeveloping a plan. I have also been working with Director Gentry on the municipal code. We're finally getting some traction from him testing that, so within the next month or so, you probably hear it will be from committee. And we are announcing open enrollment for employees will be next Tuesday and Thursday, which Debbie and Monica have been working to get all of our employees enrolled. And finally, I'm very thankful after two years to say that animal control is now under the police department, so complaints are called, Chief.
I didn't hear any clap on that, Kevin.
So Kevin, when, I guess Jennings reports on police activity, will those be wrapped in? Animal control calls will be wrapped into that, or will they be reported separately to know the track?
I plan to record it separately, Kevin.
Anything else? Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into new business at this time. And with item A, this is, we have presented to you the application for an event permit for the host of Christmas Past. This is an annual event. It is around the downtown square, and that is November the fourteenth and fifteenth. So I'll need a motion. Motion by Alderman Keenan, second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Alder. Any discussions or questions? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Alder?
Uh.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item B, this is also for an event permit. It comes from the Washington Street Church of Christ. This is for their Fall Fest, Fall Fun Fest, and Truck Retreat. This is Sunday, October the twenty-sixth, and that is on Washington Street. I'll need a motion for approval. Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford?
Second.
Second, Alderman Keenan. Any discussion or questions? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Uh.
That motion carries. We'll now move to item C. This is the Fear Not Fest, October the thirty-first. This is hosted by the First Baptist Church, starts at five p.m. to eight p.m. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Small, second, Alderman Alder. Any discussion? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
That motion carries. Also, we have a permit request for Chase the Cheetah. It's a five-k reindeer run. This is held every year about this time, November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it looks like it's going to start at the Stone Bridge Park. You have all the information attached. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Keenan, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Small. Any questions? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item E, this is Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. I'm going to read this to you. It's whereas the Board of Mayor and Alderman are authorized, the city of Fayetteville, to apply for the grant for the Tennessee Highway Safety Office to provide funding for payment of equipment and overtime pay to be used to reduce traffic crashes and related costs. And whereas the city of Fayetteville's grant application has been approved, such that ten thousand dollars has been offered to the city of Fayetteville by the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. Whereas, if accepted, the grant funds will be used by the city police department for eligible expenditures. And now therefore, in consideration of foregoing, be it resolved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the city of Fayetteville, Tennessee, that the city of Fayetteville is hereby authorized to accept the Tennessee Highway Safety Office grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, second by Alderman Keenan. Any questions or discussion? Debbie, call the vote.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item F, this has been on our table for quite some time, and this is, you've been provided the Camp Blunt Agreement. This is the state and the city of Fayetteville. They are asking for the mayor to sign this agreement. Everyone's had a chance to look at that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford?
Second.
Second, Alderman Keenan. Any questions?
Yeah, discussion, question. At work session, it was brought up that there was maybe going to be some updates to the MOU by this meeting. Is there anything you could provide?
I've had some discussion with folks at Camp Blunt, the Camp Blunt organization, but we haven't been able to, we haven't gotten a meeting scheduled yet, so we don't, as far along as I hope we may have. I'm continuing to work on that.
So are there any implications? So say we have this agreement, it's between us and the state, which is how it has been, but there is no agreement for Camp, the Camp Blunt Association to do anything there. Is there anything that stops them from operating there right now, or are we just moving forward with the assumption that we would have an MOU within, I think it gives us sixty days to have a document, a founding document? Has there been word from the Camp Blunt Association that they're willing to have that completed within ample time and not?
I can't definitively say that that's a gotten out problem, but I mean, basically, what we were trying to do is to have a kind of a discussion to see where they worry about that, so I don't want to sugarcoat that until you hear something imminent that I don't really have the authority to say.
Yeah, okay.
And also, Joseph, to your question, the MOU and the foundation document are two totally separate things. But Camp Blunt in the past has done a lot of things that are required in this. They've taken the charge on that, and so we're hoping it's nothing new that we would add to this. We would just kind of do an agreement, if I understand it right, do maybe an MOU with them to say, kind of place where the responsibility goes.
Yes, okay.
But at the end of everything, it's still on the city.
Right, yeah, that's my question is, we have not, we signed this agreement, it's on us. We don't have any agreement that anybody else is going to do the work besides us. I don't know, it just seems that you would want to have that in place before you sign an agreement with the state, but...
That was my question before. It seemed like we were getting cart before the horse, but we're at a standstill. I'm not sure, does the December thirty-first a day deadline still apply? I know that they have notified me they want us to sign this.
They did initially send a notice to give in the sixty months when I spoke with attorney, because they are crossing a fiscal year, and it's just so many complications. She asked could be ever done by November first, just to kind of keep things in accordance with the state law. They recognize, and as a matter of fact, they have recommended a MOU, but their primary purpose is with the city.
Right.
So that's what they need to hear.
And I agree that we've moved forward with this. As long as everybody's, I guess, talking in good faith, that we're not going to be hung out to dry, that we've signed this agreement, we go to the Camp Blunt Association, and they're like, actually, we're not going to sign the MOU now. Well, we've already signed it with the state. So as long as, I guess, the board understands, or we've got the feeling that there is some good faith there, I think I'd be satisfied, but do we think that...
I feel like the conversations I have had have been in good faith, but I haven't spoken to everybody that would be involved in that process, I would say.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Debbie, call the vote.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item G, this is the call for a public hearing. This is on the property located at five twenty-one Market Street West. This public hearing will be held November the twelfth, twenty twenty-five, that is on a Wednesday, prior to the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting that night. Do I have a motion to, for this public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Keenan, second.
Second.
Alderman Alder. Any questions?
Mr. Alder?
Uh.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
That motion carries. We also, item H, we have a call for a public hearing. This is a rezoning at four oh six Franklin Avenue. Just like the previous rezoning application, you've got, you've been provided all the information. This public hearing will be held Wednesday, November the twelfth, twenty twenty-five, just prior to the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Faulkner, second by Alderman Keenan. Any discussion? Debbie, call the vote, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
That motion carries. Now we'll move to item I. This is the approved, the Downtown Improvement Grant Parklet. The information has been provided to you on your iPad about this parklet. Also, I think we saw a rendering of this, and this is a part of the Downtown Improvement Grant. It was, it came before this board to approve the acceptance of this grant in December of twenty twenty-four, so we're just moving on. It's part of the Downtown Improvement Grant, also included the facade money. And you can see around the square, a lot of the merchants have taken part in this, and they're updating their buildings. It might be paint, it can be canopies, windows, doors, just a lot of different things to improve their property. And this part of it is a separate part of the grant. So do we have a motion to continue on the Downtown Improvement Grant as far as the parklet is concerned?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Keenan. Any discussion? Debbie, call the vote, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Uh.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Miss Small?
No.
Mr. Alder?
Uh.
That motion carries. Okay, we have item ready. This is for the Fayetteville City School TMA request for cost overruns. You have been provided the letter. This is from Mr. Jones for the mayor to sign, and it talks about the overruns of this project.
So this is just to...
We need a motion for discussion. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion Alderman Alder, second. Second is by Vice Mayor Bradford. Discussion.
This is just giving them authorization to send a letter, right? There's no obligation to city to do anything, it's just the obligation from the letter?
It doesn't, it's for the city schools. The city of Fayetteville owns the city schools, so, but it's for the city schools. They are submitting the formal request for the cost of the run.
This is just a request to, to, for Fayetteville.
Also, I think you provided a package on the last page of that package. It showed the budget increases from the previous budget, and Director Jones is here in case we have any questions. It looked like the total cost was nine million, three hundred seventy-two thousand, forty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Both bids came in over budget, and with the, them looking back at the bid that they would go with, it would take the total budget to twelve million, five thirty-nine, seven twenty-two, and fifty-two cents. Of that twelve million dollars, the federal share is ninety percent. The state share, TMA, would be five percent, and the local share from the federal city schools would be five percent, and that is six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents. That's what the city school would be responsible for. Any other questions?
Good heavens, Director, I'm going to make that cut.
You're into a conference?
Short question. Yeah, sure. I anticipated that might be the case, I brought some source of matter experts with me as well.
So if, I guess my, my, my question is, of the $3 million, what is the city's, like, what did that come to? Once, once you go up, let me see, I'm trying to figure out. Once it increases, our part goes up?
So, yes, the, the cities itself has an MOU with the city school system. The city school system has more than $3 million budget for that. We have plenty of money budgeted, yes. As we increase the total, the 5% proportion goes up. The, the cost for the non-grant eligible materials has also gone up, but all that is budgeted as well, and we're, we've got it.
Yes, my question is, the overage we would split with TMA? That's why we're asking TMA to cover the whole cost.
Really what we're asking TMA is to release the additional funds above the original budget to make it acceptable and compliant with the current budget. May I ask Greg to come up? He's the, he's, Greg Kennedy and Leo Wood are here with me from Broadest and Associates. They're kind of the regional experts. They do these projects constantly, and I will make sure they, I'm a school teacher, so they'll, they'll correct me where I'm wrong. Right, but yeah, my understanding is, as the, if the total cost estimated, you know, 13 million, we were planning on 9, our, our proportion goes up. But now you also have to keep in mind initially, under the, the PDMG grant, it was a 75-25 split. In our, in Greg and I's constant and diligent work with TMA, Greg primarily has orchestrated us in a way where we're getting the 95 and 5. So yes, while the, while the numbers have gone up, the 5% goes up, but the 5% increase is still well below the 25% of the original. So we're, we're getting a much more substantial grant, and we're getting more of a cost benefit because of the percentage distributions.
So we're, we're not going to be dependent upon TMA for anything else at this point?
No, sir.
This eight, eight, the federal share of the bridge is 8.443. Of that 9, 9.3, whatever it was, but this originally, it's in the bank. I have the 5, so it's in TMA's bank. Fayetteville City School District is the sole applicant, where TMA is the applicant. TMA's already received this money, the original. We're asking for the 3.2 as, that's the great thing about an HUGP grant.
Which is the new structure of the grant.
The new structure is, they know since COVID, that you try to bid a public project and trying to establish a budget for that project, you know? When we first went out to this project and onto the PDMG, had one bidder. That one bidder could not guarantee subcontractors. Did it? It happened. And that was during 2022, during the COVID. And things are getting better now, but inflation has really attacked, especially this field of this building is going to be steel and concrete. But the 3.2 we're asking for, all the other paperwork had been submitted already, and all we lacked was this letter. And the mayor wanted to bring it in front of the Board of Alderman, which is perfectly fine, but TMA has continued on plugging. And all we lack to fill our package out for the additional 3.2 is this letter.
That is part of our procedures. You know, the board authorizes, and then I sign it. So I can't just sign it without the authorization of the board.
And I discussed that with Ms. Donna Holden with TMA, and she said, that's perfectly fine, but we've continued on with the paperwork of asking for the additional funding. This, this, if y'all, if y'all know anything about these, this is DR 4514. 45, disaster code 45, that's the federal ID number. That is leftover COVID money. That's the reason you went from 75-25 to a 95 and 5. Lot better bank for the buck.
And this total amount, this is the dome only, right? This is not the build out of the inside. This isn't, this is just the structure itself, okay?
All your?
Non-grant eligible parts for, to make it, like the gym floor, the bleachers, the goals, scoreboards, things like that are not grant eligible.
And they were beat it out as bid alternates, so the school district can pick and choose which ones they wanted. Altogether, it was 13. It was 13.2.
Okay, any other questions?
Did the school board accept the, I believe the Century Construction Group? Was that an official exception?
We haven't made, it's, it's likely that that will be the case, but we haven't made a commitment yet until we get the paperwork in order. It's a cart before the horse thing. Until we, until we get some of this stuff, we're not at the point where we say this is, you know, we don't send the letters until we get all the docs in our, and this, this is one of the docs we've got.
So the letter is just?
It's a request.
But not for a distinct amount of money? Or it is for a distinct amount of money? Because if you, if you, if you have sort of distinct amount of money, you already have an idea of who you're going to accept as a?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're accepting, and that's based on the, how's that work? Is that based on the letter of recommendation from the architect?
Architect, under Director's policy, under TMA's security policy, and in line with 44 CFR, our federal codes for payment grants, is, is the lowest art best. What's best for the school district? You have, you have the options. And what was best was Century Construction, about $220,000.
So once the, once the school board accepts the bid, what's the, is, does it come back to us, or is that?
I don't think so.
That's the?
But we're, we're breaking, you know, we're blazing a new path as we go on this, but I don't think so. I think this is a?
I like to say this, the only reason that Mr. Jones is here meeting UCL is, is the city holds the hazardous mitigation plan. And this is a hazardous mitigation grant. They hold, if the high school was right outside city limits and getting the same grant, we wouldn't be here. We would be across the street because the county holds that hazardous mitigation plan. And it's all, all based on who holds your hazardous mitigation plan. You know, the same way with flooding issues. It's all the same, you've got some property in floods on that is in the county. You want to do away with their homes, buy their homes out, like Green's Place, which is a eligible program under hazardous mitigation grant program.
Like the city's done that.
We have to go through, we clearly hold the mitigation plan. And that's what I'm saying, and that's the reason since the city has our, Mr. Jones, the city's hazardous mitigation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now we've had our discussion, Debbie, we call the vote.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item K, Fayetteville City Schools. This is the FY 26 Budget Amendment Number One. This has been presented to you. There's several changes in this amendment. And it's all within their system, so it's just moving from one line item to another. So do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Alderman Small, second.
Second.
Alderman Faulkner for a second. Any discussion? Debbie call the vote.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
That motion carries. Moving to item L, this is for City Ordinance 2025-26. This is the City of Fayetteville Budget Amendment Number Five. This also has been provided to you. And I am going to read the ordinance so that you understand, and everyone understands how the money was posted in the budget. It's the governing body adopted this fiscal year 2026 budget by Ordinance Number 2025-16 on June 10th, 2025. Whereas the budget was submitted by the Tennessee Comptroller's Division of the Local Government Finance for Approval, whereas pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated 9-11-116, availability of funds and services to people in this state shall be limited to the extent that funds are appropriated by the General Assembly or the appropriate governing body of the political subdivision. Whereas the governing body needs to amend the budget to allow for increased or decreased revenues and/or expenditures. And whereas the City of Fayetteville has received a donation in the amount of $450, and these said funds are, will be allocated to the Parks and Recs Department to be used on events. And whereas the City of Fayetteville has received a donation in the amount of $723, and said funds are to be allocated to the Parks and Recs for operating supplies. And whereas the City of Fayetteville has received insurance proceeds in the amount of $6,000, $728.62. This was in the amount of two checks totaled to $6,000. And said funds will be allocated to the Parks and Recs Vehicle Repair, $4,853.62, and to the administration Building Repair of $1,875. Therefore, it is necessary to amend the 25-26 budget to reflect the receipts and the expenditures. Section 1, the revenue adjustment, as I stated, the Parks and Recs revenue budget is hereby increased by $1,273 to be appropriated in the following accounts. One is for events, and one is for operating supplies. And then also the expenditure adjustment, Parks and Recs Department, the expenditures hereby increased by $450 to be appropriated. And it lists the general ledger number, but the amount's $450. $723 will be posted. Insurance proceeds adjustment is the insurance proceeds, general ledger revenue budget is hereby increased by $6,728.62. This is to be appropriated in the following general revenue account. So in that, out of that expenditure, the six, or revenue, $6,728.62, the Parks and Recs expenditure portion was increased by $4,853.62 to be appropriated for repairs. And then also in the administration of repair and maintenance of the building is $1,875. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body, that it's hereby adopted the following changes to our fiscal budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Keenan, second. Second by Vice Mayor Bradford. Any discussion? And Debbie call the vote, please.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Item M. Board, if you will remember or reflect on September 24th, I notified you of some board appointments that were expiring. And first, I would like to reappoint Dan Holt to the Airport Authority. This is a five-year term, and once it expires September 30th, 2030. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
Motion to reappoint.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, second.
Second.
Second, and Alderman Keenan. Any discussion? Debbie call the vote.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item N. This also was sent to you previously, and it was for reappointment to Ryan Dalton to the Airport Authority for a five-year term, and it will expire September 30th, 2030. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Keenan, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Faulkner. Any discussion? Debbie call the vote.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
That motion carries. Lastly, I also sent you a file on Hope Mayo Whalen to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. She had a very extensive biography, I thought, that was really good. Her construction business experience will bring knowledge to the board, and her enthusiasm to become involved in the community is a plus. She will be replacing the seat of Pat Haynes that was expired November 1st, 2024. The new term will expire November 1st, 2027. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Alderman Faulkner, second.
Motion.
Alderman Keenan. Any discussion? Debbie call the vote, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Faulkner?
Aye.
Ms. Small?
Aye.
Mr. Alder?
Aye.
That motion carries. Before we adjourn this, tonight's meeting, again, I would like to remind everyone that the November meeting will be November the 12th, which is on a Wednesday night due to the holidays at 5:00 PM. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.